We are citizens for public transit, volunteers, advocates, lobbyists in Lunenburg County. And as I said, we've been at this for many, many years. The members of our committee include South Jack Schoon, Norma, Penny, and Stuart Frank is our chair, and Bill Snyder, who is a person who lives just outside of Mahone Bay. And Bill is somebody who has worked towards trying to get more public interest in transit systems for years, going back to probably 1980 or so. He's in a wheelchair, and he has been advocating for years. And we still feel frustrated that we haven't been able to get the engagement because there are so many people like him. For example, I can tell you that the people at the Ark in Bridgewater, several of them have told me in the past that they have actually hitchhiked to get to Mahone Bay to visit their relatives. That makes me very nervous. But obviously, they want to visit their relatives, and their relatives are older because they themselves are older. And hitchhiking is not acceptable, especially with people who are a bit more vulnerable. So why do we do what we do? We all win when a person takes the risk. We aren't paid to get people around with or without public transit. And you see the problems that we have now with the number of cars on the road, the need for parking, the expensive, constantly operating cars and so on. Not everybody can afford a car. Not everybody can afford two cars, so that one can be going to work and the other can be going off to do shopping or whatever, whatever, whatever. The environmental, economic, social health, and equity benefits of public transportation, there are numerous pluses for having a public service system. Not everybody can afford a taxi, and it's really difficult for people to get around. Public transit is therefore, from our point of view, a vitally important, essential service. We take small credit for influencing the attention focusing on the need for public transit, the creation of a transportation committee, the startup of Bridgewater Transit, and the initiation of maritime bus service. So over the years, there have been progress in various ways regarding means of transportation. That's not enough. The report that we aim for, so this report is dedicated to the memory of Norman Hazlitt, who was a longstanding member, former chair of Citizens for Public Transit. The report that we are speaking to now is just a conversation starter. We have talked to people here at Mahone Bay, we've talked to people in Bridgewater, we've talked to people in Lunenburg, talked to the people at Mogollon. We've done research. We've looked at the analysis of the needs. We've looked at stakeholder options. There are several different ways to think about it. Taxi service is not one of the prime ways. I'll give you an example. Social services often has to pay people some money to be able to get a taxi to go and follow through with their social service providers. Very difficult for a young mother to go with her children off in a taxi to meet her social service person. It can be very stressful. And coming back, social service authorities have told me that often that person ends up discussing with the taxi driver, the very personal aspects, because it is so stressful. We all have, have need of being able to get someplace and be able to get on with their functions. Having a taxi come and take you back leaves these people very vulnerable, is something social services has told me. I'm very concerned about the funding options. We have been consulting with stakeholders in various forms. We're looking at the governance situation. We've looked at the routes, we've looked at bus stops, we've looked at feasibility, we've looked at many different options. We've looked at financial parameters. There's now a well-funded and research consultant's report by CBCL, a group that you have just contracted to. Their report is an excellent report, and it's one that we're holding on to, to share with and to be able to follow through as much as we can for each other. The Public Transit Infrastructure Fund is a bilateral agreement with provinces and territories. And public transit stream will provide provinces, territories, and municipalities with funding to address the new construction, expansion, and improvement and rehabilitation of public transit infrastructure and active transportation projects. So there is money now, both from the federal and provincial governments, that they are willing to put into. Thank you. Let's move on. The benefits of public transit that include the environmental aspects, the economic aspects, and the societal aspects. It's really important for Mahone Bay, realizing that people are unable to have power, able to get out, to travel to wherever they want to go. People want to come to Mahone Bay because you've done such a good job at opening up and having interesting events and so on. How do people get here if they don't have a car? And so they must say. There's growing pressure of the finding of parking spots. You feel that more than I do. The parking space is a big issue if everyone has cars. The people who want to access the streets are just walking along and enjoying the atmosphere and so on, don't want to have cars wishing back and forth and so on. So many people who are wanting to come to Mahone Bay to visit on the days, and they would love to, but if they don't have transportation, they can't come. If the transportation has gone to work with the husband or the other partner, they don't have the freedom to come and just shop around, just to often have food at the restaurants and to really enjoy the benefits of Mahone Bay. If we have public transportation, it alleviates the need for, often for having two cars. They may still need to have one car, but it alleviates the need for two. The tremendous activity taking place through the Mahone Bay Center and spaces that are providing activity groups to come and do whatever activities and learn different programs and so on, it's so important. How can people get to it? You have just the opportunity to have all this that people want to take benefit from.
Thank you, Barbara. We'll ask, we'll go to council to see if they have any questions on the public transit topic.
Barbara, appreciate the presentation. I'm going to review the package with some great interest. I noticed that in HRM, there was a recent discussion around allowing kind of Uber and Lyft. And I do take your point about taxis not being the solution for the obvious reasons that you spoke to, but the inevitable improvement in service levels and the lowering of costs for people that can avail themselves if those auctions are in place. I'm wondering if your group had observed that and if you have any thoughts about, you know, the sustainability of that part of that segment of transportation, if the government doesn't allow, if the municipal governments don't allow those more modern applications and services to kind of come to, come to the citizens that are living here.
In fact, we haven't really looked at the Uber sort of advance. I can see that it's taken it forward in Halifax, but here, there are so many older people who would be not very comfortable, I think, who would feel very safe in a bus that was going from here to there. People with children, a set route, not having to make a phone call and that sort of thing. We just feel that a public transit system will meet the need of the people. Several, some years ago, three, four years ago, we had talked to and have the, I think you have this on your records, over 1,500 people signed their names to say that they definitely wanted to have public transit. We have been working this number of years, and we know that the public is very supportive. I've never yet heard anybody ask us about Uber, but we agree with them.
Okay, appreciate that.
Counselor Bane?
I appreciate what Counselor Feeney has said. Innisville Township, which is a township in southern Ontario, just outside of Barry, which is a sizable population, quite a mixture of people, all ages, and they, their township council, municipal council, have, are either looking into Uber or have concluded that Uber is a very viable way of doing things, because Uber will supply everything from a driver with a lighter vehicle to a regular citizen. It's probably worth looking into. I appreciate the research and the people you have gathered. I agree with Counselor Feeney that it's worth looking at.
We, I do understand the Uber system, and certainly in Europe and the bigger cities, but what we are really recommending is that there be an intermunicipal service agreement. You do not think that CPT should be running the bus system. We think that it should be the composite of Mogollon, Mahone Bay, Bridgewater, town to town. So it would be something that the citizens would all know, that this was their machine, it wasn't.
Yeah, it's more profit.
The only thing I would add to the Uber thing is Innisville Township is a rural township. It's close to Barry, you know, terribly far from Prowl, but it is a rural township. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Bane. Counselor Curver?
Yeah, I'm, just to pick up on that same thing about Uber, the community of Culture Community and Heritage Department has recently put out proposals, or request for proposals for Uber-based systems that are close to urban centers. So Bridgewater could be getting an urban center with an, you know, an urban, an Uber, Uber and urban type service that could be servicing that urban area. And that ties in with my own reticence about a fixed route system, because that was a recommendation from the report, CBCL report, that the stage one would be the fixed route from Bridgewater, Mahone Bay, Lunenburg, Mahone Bay, Bridgewater, in that sort of C-shaped loop. My concern would be that it wouldn't have enough buy-in to make it a goal for that, to take it to the next stage. That's my personal concern. Because even in a town as small as Mahone Bay, if there's one bus stop, even two bus stops, the person with two children still has to walk to get to the bus stop.
Yeah, we have, so we've always said that bike stops would be fine, because if you went through rural area, you need to be able to, of course, be able to take long distance. The second stage of that report that you referenced, it was a recommendation that the second route would be the one that came from Bridgewater all the way down to Riverport and back up on the eastern half side, to, coming down to, up to Bridgewater. And that would be, again, trying to give the opportunity for a lot of the residents in that area. And again, we are not, we are not wanting to say that there's only one way to do it. It is our wish, our thought, our recommendation, that it be an intermunicipality service agreement. And that would mean that four units would get together and work out what suited all of them. This is a large area from our perspective, but relatively, it's a very small area. And we have thought about this, talked to so many people, and we really do feel that having more people access Mahone Bay specifically for here and now, and people who go from Mahone Bay to other places would serve everybody's interests really well, so.
Okay.
CAO? I do have a question, but I think just because there's been a lot of discussion about Uber, I'm going to make the one point about the Innisville example that I always think is important to repeat to these representatives. The Innisville Uber example is predicated on the idea of a municipal per rider subsidy.
Yeah, that's correct.
The incentive created in that structure is to decrease use of the service. So a typical mass transit system, the more people who use it, the lower the costs are. In this model, in Innisville, the more people who use it, the more the municipal costs are, and it just continues to increase. So, you know, there is a question in terms of the sustainability that I think would have to really be addressed. And I'd just like to mention that. The question that I had, though, I'm trying to find the report now, it's getting in front of me, but I'll ask the question anyway because I haven't had a chance to look. Does the report that you guys had done consider the potential greenhouse gas emission benefits of this service? Like, is there any attempt to quantify cars taken off the road as a result of a fixed route transit system?
No, but that's an excellent point, and definitely CBCL and all of us are very, very aware of the global warming effect and our, everybody's attention to try and lesser the amount of CO2 and everything else. We might even end up with electric buses, for example. That's the way things are going. But to have all these cars on the road right now is not a viable option for the future. For people to be able to get on a bus on enlarged numbers would serve very, very well. And the kind of bus that we will be needing in the future will have to be one that meets the new environmental standards, for sure.
Well, like you mentioning of electric buses, at the presentation at the Bridgewater Fire Hall, I had suggested that might be an option. And if it was, that you might want to consider charging them here in Mahone Bay. We do have 60% renewable energy at the current time, so it's a nice benefit to having an operating system with an electric bus.
And charger stations coming too.
Yes.
That's right.
There are many benefits to having a charging system. And, you know, it's not a light thing either for people from rural communities to get on a bus and see their neighbor and have a chat and talk to somebody else and feel that they've actually, they're connecting. You don't get that if you are in a car. And for a lot of the older people, it's a wonderful outing for them. They can come to your museum here, which is sadly neglected because people can't get here and they often don't know about it, but they would come and then have tea, or they'd have a lunch. There is a fortune to be added to the successes that you're already having.
Depending on the timing of the routes, we've also heard several times in the past year committees from employers in the community talking about how staff would likely be able to utilize a service like that, because we have housing challenges in town for service partners.
And the Mahone Bay Center, I mean, everyone in the area knows how valuable that has become, what a success it's become, but how many people can get there if there isn't an extra car? If the partner is working and has the car, they can't get to one of the scans programs or so on. There's more than scans, there are all kinds of activities going on there. And for people to be able to access them and get on with their life, to get on the bus and bump into some friends and to invite more people to come along and join in the exercise group or whatever, things just escalate like that and take off. My colleague here, Penny, did you want to say?
Well, no, I thought we might, you might take some time to tell them why we're here, what we would like to ask. Why don't you say? No, it's, it's harder on the citizens.
I think it's, if you go a couple slides down further.
This is not the one. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not the expert here because Stuart Frank is our chair and I'm just filling in, so. You say it's a couple back?
No, we probably just complete our presentation.
Go on court. Okay. Okay. So connecting Lunenburg, Mahone Bay, Bridgewater, and significant populations of Mogollon, one of the big goals, expanding over time service to additional rural communities. Obviously, that would be everybody's goal, to be able to meet broader area. Effective, efficient service to meet community needs, focus on positive outcomes, reflect more realities, and complement other transportation functions.
One more after that. There's the area one.
So we ask the council, allow time and resources necessary for planning administrative staff to review CPT feasibility study of the transit. Their task would be to dissect and study the reported results and findings, to identify a transit system model to address residents' needs, to investigate potential partnership opportunities and funding options, to develop a proposed governance and operations model, prepare a report to council and/or the appropriate committee as applicable. That is not just Mahone Bay that we're asking for. If we're suggesting that there be an intermunicipality service agreement, it means that you talk with the other partners to see how willing and interested. It would be, it obviously would be much more successful if the four units were all together, thinking, talking, preparing, and planning. That would be to achieve the greatest amount of benefit.
Barbara, that seems like a very reasonable request. We, to be, and no one knows more about this subject than you and your organization. We've had, I think over my short time in council, we've had two or three presentations that have really moved the agenda forward. We do have a intermunicipal committee. It's never met. And honest, to be totally honest with you, we've had, we really haven't seen any level of engagement from a multiple, from a Lunenburg County perspective yet. But, you know, hope springs eternal, and I think the request that you have about reviewing the study and taking another kick of the can strikes me as very reasonable, and I'm sure that, I'm sure the council will read that report and, and we'll be, I think we're going to really, it'll be interesting to see what the outcome out of Bridgewater is with the new service that they have, if that will start some momentum so that the other municipalities will have a little higher grade, a higher degree of interest. But to be totally honest, we've, we've tried to see if there was any appetite in the past and far beyond my time here, many councils over the last 10 years. And as you would know well, it's, the take-up's been limited. But I think that the fact that your committee's still here 15 years later, and I think that's, you just got to keep trying. And so I think there will be a window of time over the next year where this may become very topical, and, you know, we'll do our part to try to play a role, be part of that.
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. That's, we're out of time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's. Before we move on from this, because there may be people in the audience who are interested, obviously you're interested in transit, could I just mention that we currently have a survey for our transportation plan open? So if you are interested in responding, especially if you're a town resident, although with the notation that you're not a town resident at the beginning, you're welcome to participate if you're not, because we do want to hear perspectives of people coming into town. That's available from our website, right, Mo? So just wanted to put that plug in, because I expect that these folks are probably interested. You may already have responded.
Okay.
And there may be data in this report that could, could inform our project.
Audrey knows where to get it, since she wrote it.
Yes, Audrey, Audrey, yes.
Yeah, it's the same person who's heading the team that we're working with, so.
Anyone else? We'll move on. Thank you.
One step at a time.
Let's go on to our correspondence action items. Number one.
Just lost that on my screen there.
These are from the Chamber of Commerce. CAO, do you have an opinion on this?
Well, I will say that at least two of these letters result from the ongoing discussions at the committee. Now, we didn't have any involvement in the choices that they made with regards to the requests to council, but certainly the wayfinding signage plan, you know, that comes direct from discussions that have been ongoing with the chamber for more than a year, was referenced even in last year's budget process. But I'm sure councillors are aware that there's background to that question.
Do we, assuming we'll review the second, the second item in the budget deliberation process?
Yeah, I mean, I would expect any financial requests would end up being referred to the budget deliberation process. So this one, even on the wayfinding signage, you know, this would be something that we already intended, as you know, was in the draft budget last year, could be something we would discuss in the budget process this year.
Are we aware of the financial contribution that the chamber is prepared to make on that?
Well, they've, they've said that, but they've indicated an amount between now and the budget, I guess council would likely to, I can try to get that information.
I would expect for budget deliberations, we should know what kind of a contribution factor they're talking about.
And I think last time we talked about it, the main concern from council, including when Andrew Tanner had written a letter from Saltbox, was that the chamber wants to participate in this initiative with the town. So I think primarily they're wanting to make that interest clear, and then from here, I can certainly go back and find out some more about the budget.
What about the items on the third letter? Winterizing public washrooms.
Second letter.
Or second town beautification program.
Is everybody good with the wayfinding one?
Yes.
Okay. What is your wish with the way signing letter?
Is there an action required from that?
I don't think.
They didn't request one, no. And I think we already have it in the budget process. So this is the.
This is the letter on.
I believe, Mayor, on the second item, that, that the COO did provide a review of costs to increase the, increase the duration of the washroom to maybe December 1st. This might have been 18 months ago. I'm believing, I think this might be the second year in a row that we received a letter. Now, this is talking about a year-round washroom, which I'm sure would need a more comprehensive review. But I know we did, we did talk about this a year ago, and some of the complications and the financial burden that that would entail, but, I mean, if, between now and the budget deliberations, I think if that information can be gathered and the due diligence can be done on how much it's going to cost, I'm sure we would review it in due course.
Exactly, winterizing. You know, Father Christmas goes to the, what, the end of the first week of December.
Right.
And those, those washrooms are not insulated or heated or.
The water comes from somebody else's property.
Yeah.
And they're talking about all year, not just after Father Christmas. Talking about right through the lobster crawl.
Fair enough.
The fat bike festivals and so on, so it's the full.
Big season round operation.
12 months of the year. I think it's a wonderful concept, but we would need to know some facts and figures.
So this is the kind of one where I'd suggest if somebody wanted to make motions, the staff be directed to investigate the winterization of the public washrooms and bring information to the budget process.
I'll second that. It's a big ticket, I am.
But some definition around the notion of winterizing.
I mean, in theory, it could be a wonderful asset for our towns, the operating cost, right?
Right.
All of it, yeah.
It is interesting that we arrived at this point through the chamber, because as members of the Economic Development Committee would know, this exact recommendation nearly came forward from the Economic Development Committee already, and if they had met. And if they had met last month, quite likely would have.
Okay. Was moved by councillor Carr, would be a secondary option, councillor Feeney? This is on the first item only, the winterization piece, not on the seasonal beautification program or power opportunities in front of the three churches. All in favor?
Yeah.
Motion's carried. What about the other two items?
So I, you know, my comment on those would be, I think there are opportunities to pursue those within some projects that we've already looked at. In particular, the provincial streetscape program could support some improvement along Edgewater Street.
Yes.
And I know the cemetery committee has talked about that recently. So perhaps the, the bottom two could, could come in under that heading next year.
And of course, we will be looking for some participation on the part of the chamber, financial support on those kinds of projects. I would think.
It would like to depend what beautification constitutes as well.
So then would there be a letter going back to the chamber and to the new chair of the chamber advising of our decision tonight? Decisions?
So at the current time, there's only the one decision. Oh, you mean in terms of the wayfinding as well? Yeah, we didn't make a motion on the wayfinding. But you know, we will through the supervising committee process, we will do it next week and certainly let them know.
Councillor Bain?
Well, your worship, it's correspondence under action items. And so I think what action would be that we respond in a positive manner, but suggest what, you know, going into budget deliberations and we expect their financial participation.
Do you want to make that motion, John? That sounds like, you want to make that motion?
I will make it a motion, but I wanted to point out that it is an action item. So I think we ought to, to respond.
Okay. You have a second for councillor Bain? Councillor Now? All in favor? Motion's carried.
So there is a third one?
Yes, there is.
So I do have a comment on this one because we did feel at the staff level that it was appropriate to investigate whether there were any zoning or land use considerations here. So I can tell you Heather's official ruling in this regard as her development officer. As long as the extent to which sale of anything was considered a secondary activity to the operation of the visitor information center, which is to say that no, no significant amount of space be given over to sale of goods and the primary purpose continue to be visitor information, that there would be no development permit or alteration of zoning required. So just so council knows when you're considering this question.
And they are specifically tracking the marketing of one particular item, the bag with the logo.
Who manages the VIC? Is this all by, is the chamber manages, so they're in charge of inventory and making sure that everything inside the VIC is managed by the chamber?
They hire, they hire the manager.
They hire.
They hire the manager.
And, and the staff. It used to be all volunteers, other than the manager.
So I think that very specific allowance needs to be communicated back to the chamber. That, because otherwise, I'm sure it'll, it'll expand. So if the approval.
The product line. Yes.
I mean, I think there has to be, I think there is a real, I think we don't want another store there. Given its proximity to the cemetery and its core purpose.
They're asking to market one item.
Yes, so they can mention that, that's right.
And so we're approving them to market one item.
And there will be a letter in writing to respond to their letter in writing, explaining what the CAO has just explained to us.
We're about to get to a motion.
Does it need a motion to respond to a letter?
Yep, it needs a motion.
I'll be, write a letter saying what you just said.
Well, I think in very specifically to this point, the letter would need to say that it will permit the sale of reusable logo printed shopping bags from the visitor.
As requested.
I don't think we need to put the catchphrase because they might change.
No, no, not the catchphrase. It would be what you just said to us, but about the, the regulations of it.
That we're accepting this because the regulations generally are required to be.
So it's embedded, yeah, so it's embedded. That would be my wish in my motion.
Seconded by councillor O'Neill. All in favor? Motion's carried.
Maureen, did you get all?
No.
Sorry. Maybe we can just take a quick break. They're all closed.
Basically, get your shopping bags here.
So that the chamber will be permitted to sell the specific, the reusable logo printed shopping bags, right?
Yeah.
And then they will.
Because it's permitted under the conditions that Mr. Hyde just.
So long as it remains a secondary activity.
So in other words, they will understand that it has to be a secondary activity.
I mean, they need a lot of bags on the shelves to make it a primary activity if that's the only thing for their lives.
Yeah. Okay. Let's move on to correspondence information items. What is the wish of council?
In the absence of the.
I didn't want to say that.
Receive and file.
Receive and file. Seconded by councillor Now. Councillor O'Neill, do you have a question?
On, I don't, 5.2, the NSFM Tuesday memo for February the 18th. There's a note, there's a note in, I believe it's in that one, indicating that March is epilepsy awareness month. And they're requesting that every municipality in Nova Scotia show support for their constituents who live with epilepsy by wearing purple ribbons at the council meetings during March. And they've indicated that they will provide those ribbons with the proviso that councils post photos. And I just wanted to support that.
I came from my purple ribbon from last year. Councillor Maureen?
I have a comment on one of the other proposals to file and that was the one from Gordon Nelson, M.L.A.
Yes.
His second paragraph went forward with a request to my colleague, blah, blah, blah. But we'll shortly be receiving reply, a reply. I think that's the last sentence is what I read into it. And I'm just wondering if we note those sort of things and see if in fact we are going to.
We do get a reply. Councillor O'Neill?
Do I need a motion for the wearing of the purple ribbons or is that?
We can, the Epilepsy Association will send us the purple ribbons. And what we've, we have the ribbons here and if people chose to wear them, they wore them. And we ended up, we had some discussion in the past about council as a whole deciding they were going to wear them. So what we came to is that the purple ribbons will be here for any who chose to wear them.
Okay, so in their, the second part of their request was to send in a photo of councils wearing the ribbons. That was something that I also wanted to support.
We did that before.
And yeah, and anybody in the past, we would just put those, we put them on our website. Now we could put them on social media and we just shared it.
But it's on a personal voluntary basis.
Okay.
Okay, if that's how we sound.
Hi, councillor Carr.
I was just gonna say, I apologize for popping onto that next letter.
Okay, councillor Carr, it's up to you.
Thank you. I, my understanding is that we have agreed as a council that we wouldn't be supporting weeks, months, et cetera.
Yes.
In general, and that's how we arrived at the idea of simply having them available and people on an individual level could, could respond as they wished. So that then ruled out the idea of a full capsule photo.
And I think, but I think, and I could be wrong, but I think the first year we did do a photo with the idea that we'll do it this year, but that's it. We won't do it after.
We did do it once and then decided against doing it forever.
When we get our purple ribbons, if anybody wants to get.
If we've heard like last year, put it off, put it off.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Councillor Bain, what was your comment?
I was just apologizing. I thought we were finished with 5.3 when I moved on to 5.4.
Never.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Is that unusual for me to do something?
Looks like we're receiving file.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go to staff reports. Staff report to council. All 74, is it?
75 pages?
30 pages.
30 pages.
Our accessibility standards have now required us to increase to 12 point font.
Yeah, fair enough.
And we gained 11 pages as a result.
However, my eyesight is helping a lot.
Less squinting. Yeah. And on the printout, it would really make a difference. On the computer, you always have the advantage of zooming. But you know, with the printout, especially on these action plan reports, it was always very small.
Mayor, I noticed on CAO's report several stars next to the cemetery committee agendas, chaired by councillor Bain under his stewardship. But I do think that we resolved most of those items at the last meeting and that was good news. Been, been outstanding for a little under a year and I know that it takes a while till, till all the, all the items bubble to the top. But it's nice to see a lot more stars on the page.
Those two gone, that last number one is really standing out, but we might have an answer to it very soon, as you guys know, so.
Directive operations report, bandstand renovations is.
Fabulous.
Councillor Feeney observed on Facebook, the new roof is in and done and it looks really good.
I sent that off to Tim O'Connor today in Newfoundland and he was thoroughly thrilled.
Oh, that's great.
I have a little trumpet player in my house that was very touched, that said, Michael O'Connor would really like that.
The red roof really looked great too. I was talking to.
Summer too, like.
Yeah, pops.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone wants to question?
There it is, 30 pages. If you're digging it into a later time, you have a question, don't hesitate to bring it up to me directly.
Okay. Then let's go to 6.2, the public hearing report on the Town of Mahone Bay civic addressing bylaw.
Your worship, a public hearing was held on February 27th, 2020 to receive written and verbal comments from the public on the Town of Mahone Bay's proposed civic addressing bylaw. No submissions were received in advance of the meeting and no comments were received at the public hearing.
Okay. You have a recommendation?
No, this is the one.
Is this where we move that council approved the second and the final reading of the Town of Mahone Bay civic addressing bylaw? I shall move.
Okay. Second and final reading. Councillor Feeney seconds it. All in favor? I bought my little metal thingy to put the number on.
So now it's gonna, now it's gonna get really publicized well.
Yes, it is. And.
We're gonna get, I want to get a picture for the newsletter.
Oh, good. Have you putting in your own sign?
There you go.
There you go.
Travel expense policy. La porchaine.
I have a bunch of questions.
Well, let me.
Yep, I do too. Go ahead.
Okay. Shall I?
Yes, please.
So I wonder why it's called the travel expense policy when it could be just expense policy.
Yeah, I would agree that was quite a reasonable change. The current policy is called the travel expense policy, but I would certainly not object to the clarity provided by removing the word travel.
The background, line two in the policy refers to, which background?
The staff report or in the policy?
The policy, I think. Where did it go? It must be in the, in the staff report part.
Yeah.
And it says in the background, refers to, line two, update to staff expense policy. Why staff expense policy?
I think that maybe it just was the poor choice of words. Definitely.
So it could be just expense policy. Eliminate this. Okay.
But the staff report's already.
All right, so that's not in there. I've talked about some typos with Maureen. Under definitions in the policy, I wondered if the external meetings, for example, I'm assigned to senior safety and to South Shore Housing Action Coalition, but I didn't see where that kind of assignment is reflected in the definitions.
Yeah, because the, because the list is exclu, is exclusive list, right? It lists specific organizations. And then the other one says specifically meetings with other municipal units, including boards of joint, boards and commissions. So it could be more broadly speaking to any situation in which a councillor is appointed, which may not, which may be, we've got your example of Shaq, but also Baycap, Coastal Action.
Yeah, plus external appointments.
It's not a joint board or commission and it is an external appointment.
And it is even more than just an appointment. It's any time you've been delegated, tasked, whatever, to represent the town.
That's right.
Right? Then your expenses are gonna be accommodated. So a fairly broad statement that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the last one trips to certain locations that's in Town of Mahone Bay for security supplies, services, work related purposes or consulting with other groups or individuals is pretty broad. But I think we should just change the meetings with representatives of other municipal units, including meetings of joint boards and commissions, to be a broader reference to any situation in which a councillor has been appointed. I think in the unappointed situations, you probably want to rely on the last clause here.
Yes, yeah. Thank you. So that will be reflected. That was definitions. 3.0. B, 3.0. B, mileage will be reimbursed for only out of town mileage and calculated as a distance from their usual place of work, the grammar's a little odd here, usual place of work to the destination, whichever is less. But there are two things there to compare to determine whichever is less.
I think it should be your, either your home or the town hall, whichever is less.
And that was, that's actually meant to be not from your home because it's exceedingly problematic to do mileage beginning from somebody's home. So that whichever is less is, Luke should have highlighted this because that's actually a proposed change that's in here. That, that is actually an intentional change and he should have taken out the whichever is less and highlighted.
Usual place of work is no, I don't think would be an acceptable, acceptable inside the, inside the. I'm sorry, guys, I'm exhausted here tonight, but I just think we, it's, the usual place of work implies that you're at work. I don't think that's the intent. It's, you're really compensating somebody from there, from the town hall to some other location if you choose to take the claim.
Let's use Luke as an example.
Right.
If he's going to a meeting in Bridgewater.
Right.
If he was here and the meeting was at 10:30 and he left town hall.
Yeah.
Right? Then we would pay him from town hall.
But it.
But if he's at home in there, we're not gonna pay him to come here and then go there.
We still should because the meeting's just as likely to be in Chester. At the end of the day, we pay all the mileage from the town.
If it's, then if it's in Chester, then it becomes, it's a different scenario than if he's going to Bridgewater.
I think we should just say specifically mileage will be reimbursed only from 493 Main Street.
Calculated from the town hall, that's fine. Yes.
Because that's what we do. That's what all of our claims are currently.
So that was the intention of that.
That's not what's covered in the provincial government mileage.
Yes, it is. It is, I know.
It's from your place of work, period.
I can't imagine.
Well, oh, yeah.
It was never when I worked for Cantopos, it was always from the place of work. So we can fix the 3B for that, yeah. And sorry, that wasn't highlighted because now that we're reading over it, I know he deleted the part about going from your home.
Right.
Because he and I talked about that.
But it doesn't read right, A, it doesn't read right, and B, it's wrong.
But if he had caught it, it also would appear to be, we should have highlighted that.
And then three, the C, the clause below it, for employees that are required to use their own vehicles within the town for regular day to day work duties, a mileage allowance shall be established for those positions. Using their own vehicles within the town. Within the town.
Yeah.
A mileage allowance shall be established for those. Can you explain that? I don't better understand what it means.
Derek and the meter reader and some, we have one water department vehicle, but there are in fact two staff people that.
Yeah, we don't give running around vehicles to the staff.
But is the mileage allowance that's paid the same as it's paid for someone who's gonna go to Halifax?
45 cents a ride.
Whatever it is.
I think it's based on a calculation.
Are we saying that we have town staff that are using their own personal vehicles to do town business?
Yeah.
See, Derek is around all the time. If you're in town, we'll see him go to the cemetery. John, the guy that we hire in the summertime that does the earth, the grounds work.
And I'm assuming somebody's reviewed that policy to make sure it makes economic sense for, for the taxpayer.
I'm not absolutely sure that it does. I think if we start looking at it fully more clearly throughout its management, we'll probably decide to change that policy.
Yeah, because, I mean, if we're, if we're sending thousand-dollar monthly mileage checks.
We're not.
Yeah, it's not that, but I do think that you're right.
I'll leave it with you.
Hundred bucks, hundred fifty bucks a month.
May I clarify one other thing on the aspect of the staff? And just to clarify, that would be someone like, for example, John in the summer, who uses his truck to go to all the garbages, to unload them, and Derek and that sort of thing. When I go to a meeting or take pictures of the new bandstand roof and that sort of thing, that is not something that mileage, because that's not part of my day-to-day, it's not part of my job to have.
We do a lot of running around town, but we never get the.
But it's not part of it, I could walk, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you consider the examples that have been given, like Derek and that sort of thing, there really is not any other options, to be fair.
It sounds.
Because Derek is in a truck all the time. So, I mean, I think what we're doing is pretty legitimate. Yeah, okay.
And is that in the contract written, that they're using their personal, are we covered for, I mean, for people putting garbage into their own personal vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, it is insured while he's using it for this purpose. It is under a policy.
Town policy.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
He's covered under our insurance?
When he is using it for that purpose.
For work purposes. Four zero, four zero C, I'm sorry about this, but I have these questions. C A O approval, which number was that? D, A?
C.
C.
T.
Right. Attendance at events that exceed or will exceed the approved budget will require preapproval from the C A O. Why the C A O and not council?
So that's a budget allocation thing. So in general, line item exceedance within the budget within the C A O policy has a limit. If somehow a trip were going to exceed that limit, which would be a very extravagant trip, because we're talking tens of thousands of dollars, then it would be council. But within that limit, the council has previously delegated to me the ability to approve those expenditures. They still have to be reported back at year end, like you know they happen, but.
Okay, so we'll exceed the approved budget, require the preapproval of the C A O.
So council approves the expense budgets in the annual budget process?
Oh, right.
So if council, if council approves a budget of, pick a number, twenty thousand dollars, and Joseph's trip is gonna put us over the twenty thousand dollar mark.
The greatest aquaculture.
I would have to.
You would have to bring that back to council. Have seen twenty thou, the approved budget line?
It wouldn't have, it would have to exceed the approved budget line by more than an amount of money that is specified in the C A O policy.
We never line item anything.
Yeah.
We haven't done a ver, we haven't ever received a variance analysis to that.
C A O has a limit of five thousand dollars of approval for non-budgeted items. So can you just come back to councils?
If everybody else thinks it's okay, that I'll.
Well, I think the mention of twenty thousand dollars is a gross exaggeration. So if we go back and put it into the perspective of what it really is, it's not a gross exaggeration, it's what the policy.
And I think we should also be clear that, to my knowledge, Maureen, he jumped in, I've only been here two years, I don't believe council has ever exceeded the budget line for expenses as a council. Individual members have spent more than a proportionate share, but others have spent less.
Well, the way I was reading it is that council would have approved a budget, a budget amount.
Yes.
And that if, if expenses go over that, I would have assumed that the approval for the overrun would have to come back to council rather than the C A O.
But after, beyond the C A O's threshold, it would, but that's another five, that's a big number.
His threshold by policy is five thousand dollars.
Over budget?
Yeah.
Over budget.
For non-budgeted items.
For non-budgeted items. This is exceeding the approved budget.
It's not five thousand, it's not five thousand dollars over.
It's if it goes over that.
It's over five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, if it were, anything other than less than that, you can.
All right, I'll talk to you later about it. My last point is in six B, where it is family expenses. Why is the, ever, six B, where's six B?
Six B, yeah.
So it's under, why is it, oh, it's not there, it's the eighteen-year-old. Why, why would we be paying for childcare up to eighteen years of age when children are allowed to babysit at age twelve, thirteen?
Can't even write off childcare costs beyond twelve, I think.
Sorry, which, I'm picking up with your scroll.
We're down the highlighter there.
It's in the yellow area, right near the bottom, there are bullets.
Yeah. This is the language that was in use in the versions of it that this was based on. We wrote this, but this was the language that was being used to define who was eligible to be cared for. You know, children under eighteen years of age who don't have a disability, I mean, I would agree with you if maybe you have a child who's up to eighteen years old, who is personally with a disability, that's already covered, so you're talking about children who are maturing, you know, at a normal rate. I do think that this is what is established in other places, council's discretion, though, to pick a different number.
I think I would align it with, if you're going, if you're going to, you're gonna go in this direction, I think you'd align it with the C R A, tax deductibility for childcare with that age.
What is it?
Which I believe it's twelve. Check on that, just a second. Twelve seems more reasonable than eighteen.
Well, it's a clause about person with disability.
Your worship, I have a problem with this whole basic concept. And I think of all the volunteers we have in Mahom Bay, who are not necessarily on committees, have to put in hundreds of hours. I have never heard any of them even consider thinking they should be given any kind of reimbursement for the hundreds of hours they put in on various committees, whether festivals, the center, to name only two logical ones. And I've never heard anyone even talk about feeling they should be reimbursed. Although this is talking volunteer committee. I realize that. I read that very carefully, and I still have a problem with it.
I think we're hoping to have a whole kettle when we start doing this.
And I have a problem with member of council. Council does receive an honorarium for their participation around this table. I don't think that they should be giving additional consideration, because they may have family responsibility, and I certainly don't agree with seventy dollars a day. I mean, what do you do with a three-hour meeting? You pay them seventy dollars for three hours? I don't know. I mean, that detail is not here. Pray to that, your worship. At one point, I don't know if it was policy, but it was the impression of councillors, because we had a different structure of tax deduction, that that would account for those extras that we would go, because we were getting an income tax break. And now we have compensated for that.
Six fifteen.
Yeah. No longer getting it, so I think the same thing still applies, that we do not compensate for those sort of things. Counselor O'Neil?
So I disagree, and I'll just reiterate that we've just discussed, or we're about to discuss, a policy where we have no concern about funding mileage, funding breakfast, funding steak dinners, but we are offended by the idea of funding the care of an elderly dependent, or someone with Alzheimer's, or a child, and keeping them safe, or someone's tummy is rumbling. We have, you know, we don't, we don't get offended by, it seems like, it seems like this seems like a very offensive part of a, of a policy that is actually consistent with the rest of the policy. If someone's hungry, they get paid, why don't they bring a sandwich from their house? You know, you get a stipend, you get your, you get your councillors pay for that. You shouldn't actually then be paid for your dinner when you're away. I just feel that this is new, and it's challenging to people, it's confrontational, because it hasn't been done on councils, but it is a progressive policy, and I feel it is the right policy to, for inclusion.
For inclusion?
For inclusion, because this, this addresses directly a systemic barrier to participation in the democratic poll, in the democratic process. Not everyone's lived experience is the same, and this addresses lived experience directly.
Okay, Counselor O'Neil? Well, I was just trying to say, my concern still applies to this. And, you know, as an elected official, I get elected, I campaign, and I know, you know, what it's all about. Yeah. And I know we had one councillor come on, I was quite surprised he was getting paid.
That's right.
Yeah, he wasn't even aware, but he wanted to serve the town. Mind you, I don't think he voluntarily gave us payback as a donation, but I think when he got in here, he realized there was a lot more to being a councillor than there was showing up for one monthly meeting or two monthly meetings. And I just carry it right over to all of the people in this town that volunteer, and so many people outside of this town. Some drive from Le Havre to volunteer, and they do it willingly because they want to support and be active in the community. Counselor O'Neil?
And I'm not gonna belabor the point, because I don't feel that there's an appetite at the table to go toward this, and, you know, I will align with what comes through. But I would just like to hear the argument for paying for someone's roast beef sandwich at lunch. And I would just like, I would like to hear that argument in consideration of why we wouldn't extend it to this policy. Why should I pay, why should I be paid for my roast beef sandwich at lunch when I can just bring a sandwich with me?
That would be an option.
It is, it is an option, but, but actually, that, you're right, it is an option. This is not an option.
That's right.
We.
It's not an option.
We, we spent some time discussing this item in our last council meeting, and there was a list of other municipalities that, that either had adopted a similar policy or, or a list of, a list of other municipalities who had yet to undertake a policy like this. I think before, weigh in anymore on this topic, I just, I'd like to really have a better understanding of where, what, where is the greater thinking on this topic? It's not, it doesn't strike me that this is ever going to be a material item. I mean, it's capped at, at two thousand dollars a year. It's, so it's not going to be such an onerous burden on the tax base that it would be hell to die on from that perspective. But I would really like to understand, like, where, where are the other municipalities on it? How quick is the adoption of these types of policies? And if, if staff could undertake to kind of bring back that information at our next staff meeting with enough time for, for the council to sort of soak in that we're not only discussing the mileage, but we're also discussing an expansion of entitlements, which is what this is. And if, if the entitlements for any committee members or any councillors are going to be expanded, I think that there should be some thoughtful conversation about what that means, and, because that doesn't happen very often. I mean, it does really, I mean, it's a very, it's very unusual to expand the entitlements of elected officials. So that doesn't mean it doesn't have, it's not worthy of discussion, or that we shouldn't even inevitably vote for it. I just think we need to be a little more deliberate about understanding what the trends are around the province before we weigh in heavily.
I think the information that was presented showed us that there was one municipality that afforded the benefit to committee members, and there was a second municipality that afforded the benefit to committee members as well as council members. And the rest of the municipalities that they had gotten returns from, there was nothing.
Well, and I can say, I think you're quite right to characterize it that way, but I think that Joe was thinking of why so many of them are no. Is it because they considered it and decided on no? And, you know, staff are telling us, because we're staff, right, we're asking, do you have a policy? And they're just simply saying, no, we don't have a policy. I think a letter to either other councils, or it is them, or something at the political level would be necessary, or even just conversations, say with the mayor's wardens, would be necessary to try to get a read on that question. I would not feel that staff will get any more than what we heard the first time around. But that's because staff are not really in a position to speculate on that subject, what the trend is with councils, that councils have to prove it.
Thank you. I agree with everything that Counselor O'Neil has said so eloquently. And I'm also aware that the town of Lunenburg has set up a committee, citizen committee, to review council remuneration. And I think that this topic, given the degree of feeling and difference of opinion around the table, might best be handled by a citizen review committee.
Which topic is that, Counselor?
Council, council remuneration, ranging from honorarium to this kind of benefit, and anything else that could, would come under.
And how would you, would you see that impacting staff?
Staff? Are staff included in your mileage? No.
No, but I'm thinking of Counselor O'Neil's example. If, if I'm gonna eat a roast beef sandwich at lunch, as opposed to putting in a meal claim, will staff do the same thing? You know, it's, it is foreign in, I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, but I'm saying in provincial government, federal government, in the private sector, that's what happens. When you're on business, you're reimbursed for the cost of doing your, doing your travel, basically. Sure.
These rules were created at a time when only one particular type of person was ever going on business for these kinds of trips. And those rules were created by that particular type of person, and those rules exist today. And now council tables are changing. There is diversity at council chambers, at council tables. And I, for one, want that diversity. And I have identified, and others have identified, who have progressive outlooks, that there are systemic barriers to participation at council tables, and this policy speaks to one of them directly. And so the example that I'm using about the roast beef sandwich isn't necessarily speaking to a recommendation for staff. What I'm saying is, the argument against extending benefits to care extends, is, is the argument against that is being held up, that councils are given an honorarium. And my argument is, yes, if we're given an honorarium, then that should apply to all expenses. Everything that we do should come in under our honorarium. And why are we not funding very important things, taking care of actual people, but we're very concerned and we easily fund and don't question the fact that, you know, we're funding sandwiches?
Yeah, all right. Counselor Bain? Well, does this get expanded to volunteers, strike up the word committee? This, we all know what most of our towns and municipalities, other than councils, why we have festivals, why we have the center. The center would not exist without volunteers. Our festivals, which require two hundred people, some put in an hour, some put in a hundred and twenty hours. Our firefighters are in that similar situation. And so I, I'm not saying we should ignore it, maybe it should be further explored, but the way it stands there, I would not be supporting it.
I'd say two things. In, so in the private sector, or as an employee of the town, or the province, when you have work-related activities that take you outside of your core community or your place of work, you're compensated for those expenses. I don't believe childcare is an eligible expense. Under, I know Bell Canada wouldn't compensate me for childcare. I don't think that the province of Nova Scotia would compensate me for childcare. It would be, my obligation to have childcare is, is, doesn't go away, but my, but my requirement to cover it is understood by the federal government, and they give. and they give me a tax deduction for that unfortunate cost. And that's just, that's, that's the way, that's the country we live in, and that's the way that, that cost, which is significant, is dealt with. So I think that, you know, we've, as a council, we've, we've looked at the remuneration of, and the honorarium once during this, um, this sitting of this council. And when we compare it to our peers across the rest of the province, I believe it's fair to say that we're either the second or the, maybe even the lowest level of remuneration of any individual councils. But maybe, we might, we're in the, we're, let me put, we're in the bottom. We'll put, say we're in the fifth percentile, as they say. So, um, to the degree that the compensation isn't, is, is understood, it should be, it should be understood when, when people decide to, to participate. I don't know if this expansion of the entitlement is, it's not just, it's really, it's not just, this is an extraordinary benefit, although it has a lot of merit. But I don't think it's, I think it really needs to be covered by the individual counselor's honorarium.
But how do you reconcile that notion with Counselor O'Neil's? That the only reason why it doesn't happen, or hasn't been happening, is because the organizations have been created from a patriarchal perspective?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I mean, fair enough. I mean, so I know I work for a company that's had, has, has had a female CEO. There's lots of female COOs at, in CAOs around the table. I'm, I'm all for being a trendsetter, as you know. I just, I'm not sure if we understand the limitations of this change in policy. So I think that it's been well, um, it's been, it's well advocated. So far, we've had two lengthy discussions of two council meetings this month on this topic. You know, I certainly take to heart the, the position of Counselor O'Neil, supported by Counselor Carver. And every dog has its day, as they say, and every time, and at every point, there's a, a time when, when a convention that seems that it can't get supported suddenly becomes supported and then later on embraced by all. And then in the rearview mirror, we look back and we say, I can't believe we ever lived in a world where this policy wasn't in place. Fair, fair enough. I just, I think that it would be difficult for me to support this policy tonight without a little more analysis from staff around the totality of the, of the increase of the, on the, on the town's budget by providing this increased entitlement.
Counselor Carver?
Counsel Fini referred to workplaces that provide full, full salaries. And we cannot compare that situation with the situation of council honorarium.
Fair enough.
Which by all accounts, and we have recognized many times around this table, does not in any way recognize, provide, provide a venue either for, to be considered as a full-time job. It's not, even though it sometimes is in terms of the hours that are put in. And to, to Counselor Bane's comment about people stepping up for council because they want to serve, it takes me back to the days when teachers were considered volunteers in their communities and paid a pitiful, you know, pitiful amount of money.
Until they got married, then you had to resign.
Yes. So it's not, the honor, the, the argument about the council honorarium covering, should be covering, uh, personal costs around family care in order to attend meetings, I think is, is suspicious argument. So it shouldn't, shouldn't even be there. I would ask people around the table to picture yourself as a single parent with two, three children, and with the wherewithal and the ambition and the interest in the community to run for council, and what it would take to do that. Just picture yourself going through the motions in an evening to come out to an evening meeting. That's all I'll say. And when it comes to a vote, I'm going to ask for a recorded vote.
Counselor O'Neil?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what, what Counselor Bane has said. I have a problem really with the volunteer committee part of it. Other volunteers, like you said, you know, when I had, my children were younger and I was part of a program, I, there was no reimbursement of any sort for anything. And so I had to pay for my own childcare, I had to do this, whatever had to be done for me to volunteer for that group. And a lot of volunteers are doing the same thing today. So I don't think we can just go along with our volunteer committees and single them out, so to speak. So I really have a problem with that part of it. And I'm still looking at, I worked with Counsel Fini. I'd like to see a little more research done, a little more how other places are doing it before I actually yield it to support it.
Any other comments? CAO?
Oh, I, I wanted to wait till.
Okay. Just, just one time.
Just a process comment for me.
If, um, so, is the intent that the entire policy is going to be voted upon?
That's what I was gonna talk about anyway.
I'm waiting for my turn.
Yeah.
Right. So is that the, that was the intent?
I, 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 I think if, if we could, you could make a motion to approve the policy that's presented. But first, we would do, when that motion is out, then we would have to have an amendment to possibly not approve the part on, on family care or home care. Defer that to staff for additional staff work and just approve the travel portion of it.
Can I clarify? So, at this point, obviously because of our council policy, we can't present the draft to you at this meeting and have you vote on in this meeting. So as it notes up there, this will be back on the agenda for a third time, March 10th. Because when it was last on our agenda, if you recall, Luke didn't have drafts of the policy in front of you. Now we've had drafts of the policy in front of you, which means the actual voting on it would have to happen at the March 10th meeting. And at that time, it would be the prerogative of council to move either or both of the changes. So we've actually presented two draft expense policies with discrete caregiver allowance and meals allowance.
Right.
If somebody wanted to make a motion, that we approve the amended policy reflective of both of these drafts. They would both be in there. And then, as you say, if somebody wanted to remove it, a hostile amendment or a friendly amendment could be used to remove one of them. But somebody could also say that we approve an amended policy reflective of the meals allowance, and that could go to a vote. And then somebody could else could say, well, now I'd like to move that we amend that policy reflective of the caregiver allowance, and that could go to a vote.
Can we separate this into two separate policies?
That would make sense to me. I'd rather.
I think the first thing that has to be done, that travel has to be taken out of there because right now the caregiver allowance isn't part of a travel expense.
Well, I, yeah, so I, I was.
It's part of the council.
I was gonna say with regards to Penny's suggestions for amendments that don't involve the highlighted sections, if everybody would be in agreement, I think we can make the changes to the non-highlighted sections of both drafts. So the things around, removing the word travel from the expense and the clarifications under definitions with regards to the type of meetings counselors are eligible to claim for. If we could just isolate those changes, put those in both drafts, and continue to have the discussion be primarily around the two specific provisions, meals and caregiver allowance, that would be my suggestion.
I, I feel I still haven't had a satisfying answer to the difference in logic between the, the things that are, the things that would be expected to be paid for out of the, out of the council honorarium. Right, I, I feel that that, what you went, and thank you for detailing the permutations, but I feel like it still doesn't address the logic. And, you know, if we're saying that, on one hand, we get an honorarium and therefore we shouldn't expect to have certain things paid for, but we should expect to have other things paid for, that, I still haven't reconciled that logic yet.
Okay.
So was everybody, you know, I know it's fairly complex, relatively clear on the process. If we will reattach the same thing, we'll make the changes to both versions that Penny suggested. If everyone was comfortable with those, we went over them before we get into the substance. And then counselors will have the option, when this comes up on the agenda at your next meeting, to either move all the changes, both the changes, or one of the changes and vote on it.
If we're gonna make the wording similar, the key difference being, one, you're talking about travel expenses, the other one, you're talking about caregiver allowance, why couldn't we not just treat it as two separate policies?
So the, the meals is clearly amended existing policy, so we need a new policy that only applied to caregiver allowance. We could have a policy just applied to caregiver allowance. I think that it would often be missed by people. So if we're putting all the policies up on the website, somebody's looking for expense because they, maybe they want to run for council. They may not spot a second one. But we can certainly bring it up as a separate one if that was preferred.
Sorry. I think it's confusing. It is for me because you're, they're two very distinct issues.
I distinguish them between travel expense policy, which would include the meal allowance.
Yeah.
And maybe the other would just be a council expense policy, which would include the caregiver.
But that, if you call it that, then you're talking about giving the allowance to council as well as to members of council committees.
I think you'd be best off to have a caregiver allowance policy if you really wanted to separate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would be true.
Essentially the provisions that are reflected here. I would question the necessity for it, but if council felt it was necessary, you shouldn't leave this open.
I think, I think however, that it would, doesn't it make sense for the caregiver allowance to be a subset of the, the honorarium discussion? So I don't know if we have a written honorarium policy.
We have a remuneration policy.
A remuneration policy, and this would be a subset of that as if we, because I think we've already identified that any payments would have to be a taxable benefit anyway.
But committee members don't have an honorarium.
No.
Members of council committee don't have an honorarium.
I, I agree. It's also, it's also, it's, so we would be cutting, you know, 30 T-forces to 30 committee members?
Yeah.
Right?
It's a cost of doing business.
I know. All I'm suggesting is that when we have policies like this, they usually come with a staff report on the impact on, on, on the administration.
Yeah.
And again, my, my gut tells me this is a small, small potato item financially, but I'd rather have some, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but when you expand it to, say, 100 odd committee members and across all of our council committees and all of our community members that sit on all the committees to extend, extend that policy out, I mean, it, it would be nice to know exactly how we thought we were going to administratively handle that. I know that unlike compensating.
You think we would have 100 people claiming?
No, I don't, Mary, but I think there's, there could be 100 individuals who may choose to claim if they're eligible. I doubt seriously 100 people would claim it, but I think there's 100 people that could claim it if they were eligible. I mean, it's just whoever's eligible theoretically could claim it. All, all I'm suggesting.
Twenty people, but still a lot of people.
Sure, I, I, I take the point. All I'm suggesting is, I think there are some very real, I think we have to understand and we, that we just can't hand out checks unless it would have to be disclosed. And then how are you gonna get the information back? And there's a compliance issue, and what kind of court? So, I mean, we've got one paragraph up there, but we really don't have a full program that would say, okay, how exactly would it be administered and worked? And I think if we see that kind of package at our next meeting, I mean, I think you'll, we'll be able to have another conversation about this on March 10th.
Counselor Carver?
This is an opportunity for us to be, to lead as opposed to looking for other leaders to emulate.
Fair enough.
We can make that. We're small but mighty. And.
Some of this commercial one is somewhere.
We're also small and.
No, just, no, Counselor Carver finished.
I've finished, I think.
Counselor Bane had his hand up.
Well, I was just wondering, at one point in these discussions, there was talk of taxable benefit?
It is, for sure.
I went through that in my career, things that were given to me and then taken away and became taxable benefits, and that's the way it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, and that does not appear to have been a consideration in this as taxable benefits. Certainly, you know, remunerations are often taxable benefits. Because things just aren't quite as flush as they used to be.
CAO?
So procedurally, I was just referring the, reviewing the council remuneration policy. And so I, I think the primary distinction between just terms of the procedure of having an independent policy versus a, an amendment to the council remuneration policy versus an amendment to the expense policy really does come down to who is eligible to receive. The expense policy does apply to committee members. So currently, to your point, Joe, we actually do already issue, nobody's really claiming, but we do already issue repayment for legitimate expenses that are claimed by committee members. So asset management committee members will attend training if we sign into the next round of, of in training, for example.
But that's not a tax.
If they were to drive, no, no, I'm not commenting specifically on Joe's point, I have just a previous one. If, if they were driving to a meeting for that purpose, they would be able to claim mileage. So the overall structure, if we use expense policy, would be the same. If we don't want committee members to be eligible, and we're just talking about council, we could easily add to the council remuneration policy a section that says, "And in addition to the provisions of this policy, the provisions of the expense policy shall apply to councils as stated in the expense policy" with the addition of, and the addition would be the section of childcare, sorry, caregiver allowance that would only be applicable to council. So, so that is a possibility, as is the standalone policy. At the current time, because this is what's been provided, I think we have a responsibility as staff, unless we're directed by motion, to put this on your agenda at your next meeting. And then on the basis of that, you know, if, if something didn't pass, we'd certainly entertain other motions, other suggestions, and.
Just as an aside, Treasury Board went through this process about 20 years ago. In particular, when a single parent would be required to be out of the area on a course or out of the area on assignment, then the Treasury Board pays for the childcare requirements. Now, at that time, it was childcare, it wasn't family care, it was childcare in particular. But they did pay in the situation where it was a single parent family, and they'd been doing it for quite a long time. But I like, personally liked the idea of two separate pieces. Isolate the travel from this one.
I think if we are gonna revisit next meeting, the caregiver allowance, it should align with the 16 years of age that CRA denotes versus 18.
CRA says 16 years?
I just checked on that, yeah.
16 years?
CRA says 16 years for what?
Childcare. Eligible, so childcare costs incurred for children up to the age, up to the age of 16 are eligible.
Yeah.
I, I feel that 13 is reasonable. I mean, as to Counselor Carver's point, you can babysit at 13.
But, but whose, whose call is it?
I think you.
Well, the, the legal babysitting age is 13, so I think it's our call.
I think it's absolutely council's call, whether you pick 13, 16, or 18. When whoever makes the motion, should somebody choose to do so on March 10th, you can specify as amended to reflect the age of, and then whoever's making the motion can decide what they feel based on this conversation that's appropriate.
Can we move on? Oh, I can't even call a vote, even though I object to that idea.
But we can move on.
Can we move on? So what is your understanding?
So for the next meeting, we're just putting this back up. We're making the changes to the non-highlighted sections, and council will have the option to move acceptance of any or all or none of it. And then if there's a desire at the same time to direct staff to come back with a draft policy that is independent of this policy, we can also do that.
Okay. Alrighty. What's next? Tax sale policy.
This one is now been in front of you long enough to be voted on.
Okay?
Mary, I'd move that we adopt the amended tax sale policy as presented.
Move, do we have a secondary?
What's seconded?
Counselor Carver will second it. Question? All in favor? Motion's carried. Let's go to the flight flying policy.
Oh, I have a couple of questions about that one from my notes. May I?
Yes, please.
6.5, number five, 6.5, number five, flight flying policy, which I haven't got up.
6.5, yeah.
Sorry, Penny.
Half mast until the day of the funeral. Now, some people, sometimes there aren't funerals. So I'm just throwing that out there for discussion and consideration. Sometimes the observances don't take place until months afterwards.
Which clause? Which clause?
Number five. I'm sorry, I, I've lost my flag flying policy, but it, I have it written down as six.
Looks like it would be five.
Number five.
Five.
Yeah, four and a half mast marked passing those detail below. Until sunset on the day of the funereal.
Is it funereal?
No, it's not.
So where did you see that, Mr. Mayor?
This is on number five, flags at half mast. I recall there was one in the obituaries today where there was not going to be any service.
Right, right, exactly. So that's how.
I think the Legion goes by four days after the.
The death?
If this goes through, because we just ran into that with one of our members and he's also a member of the Legion. We put our flag at half mast, so I said, they said, how long do we leave it down? I said, I don't know. So we, at least, I think they said four days.
I could say for a creative, four days from the time of notification, so just, we just do it for four days from when we do it?
Notification of the individual's death?
We'll lower it mentally, but lower it for four days.
Yeah, if there's not, if there's four days, if there's not going to be any service, if it's gonna, you know, if the service will, or, or the.
Four days or service.
Whichever comes.
Suggestion.
Everybody's good with that.
Okay.
And the only other comment I had on that was that, I'm not sure we have anything called Mahone Bay County.
Oh, yes, that, that's funny.
Okay, we steal this.
Maybe we should, but, yeah.
But I, I think it's there twice somewhere, so just looking through it.
Yeah, that's definitely one of those find all replaced issues, so we'll, we'll remove county from that.
Those sometimes are funny, yeah.
Any other questions on that one?
It's like we remove county rather than Mahone Bay.
Local military, oh, yes, I do have another one, five B, five D.
Hang on, CIO.
I'm, I'm carrying on, I'm sorry. Five D.
Five D?
Five D, recognition of Canadian military personnel by local members of the Canadian military whose lives are lost. Local military.
While on active duty.
Local members of. It could be that somebody's from here that's a member of the military.
Right, I'm sorry, I don't know if I marked.
But are we talking about active duty or in theater?
Local men.
I don't think we would need to necessarily make the distinction between active duty, not in theater, if someone has died, but that's just.
Somebody in uniform who's, you know, gone on a course up in board and dies in the process.
Does local, if somebody lived in Clearland, it's in town, then it's a local, like, you might be more specific.
Yeah, I think the reason we weren't more specific is the feeling that the Legion might have some sense as to who would appropriately be defined as local. And they don't have the same boundaries as the town. That was why we, you know, because you gotta find a way to accommodate that. Or at least that was the feeling. I mean, it's the town.
In consultation with the local Legion? Just throw it out there.
Yeah, I, I think if somebody were to really come and ask and say, you know, this person died and they were from, you know, just outside of town limits, we would probably want to err on the side of doing it anyway.
How far outside of the town limits would you go?
Well, the person would have to come ask, so I think it's logically defined that way. But I mean, maybe you'd get people asking who are from, you know, a hundred kilometers away.
I guess.
I tend to think it would be fairly obvious, but, you know.
No such animal.
I, I would suggest in consultation with the.
Legion?
Branch forty-nine Legion.
I would think that.
Yeah, we could just put it on the end of that sentence, I think.
Even if you put it in brackets.
Are you going back to be there with the. Protective services? Are we only got flight at half mast if they lost the line of duty?
That's what's saying there.
Yeah, we could say active duty members rather than members who are lost in the line of duty.
Keddie, your drug.
Where is it?
Keddy, your drug.
I don't like that.
So you, you don't need to listen to that anymore? Okay, so yeah, I think the question would be, if you wanted it to be fire department members who are actively members of the department, you could use the same phrasing, I think, as with the military.
Just active firefighters or active RCMP members.
In consultation with the local RCMP.
Well, could be just recognition of active members.
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't, like, we'd only need to consult and verify. There's no interpretation. They're either active members or not. So I don't think we need to cite the consultation if we just use the terminology which we're just in. The Legion, we were consulting because of the locality needing definition, but in this case, they're either an active member or they're, they're not. But I think that, I think that would be reflective of the intent here. I think, I think the concern would be not specifying active members where people have passed in and out of volunteerism could be quite difficult.
And the, my last point about flags policy is number seven. Would we need to add NSFM as a place where they can be flown, a flag can be flown?
Yeah, I mean, I assume council probably previously by motion did approve that activity, but now that we know that, we could list it here. Just does say flags are reserved to be used for purposes determined by council by motion, so when we first had the request, we probably did, but.
Just we didn't. It was a by consensus. We didn't actually make a motion, but.
Well, then.
But we fought about it, so.
Put that statement in.
And I think it should probably be a standalone, like A, B, C, D, E, and we'll just add a new letter in there and F up to F.
Historically, that's where it was determined that we needed to have a town flag.
Yes, and I was just surprised it wasn't by motion. So we could just add that as a standalone to this list of under seven. New seven D.
Okay. Anything else?
Not for me, I'm done.
Okay. Have we figured out which flag pole we're gonna put it on?
So we, the policy makes specification that there is one flag pole for the use of requests from third parties, and then other flag poles will be governed by this policy with respect to the flying of federal and provincial flags in the half mast regulation. So council has not yet given direction as to where that one flag pole, which we got from Mahone Bay Center, will be located, on which we will fly flags on requests of other organization. And the town flag when we're not flying, like, on request of other organization.
And I believe you've got two recommended locations?
Yeah, I had previously recommended either visitor information center or the bandstand, and that's intentionally to give the maximum opportunity for people to see the flag in those locations. They're very high, you know, prominent, high traffic locations. We also considered that it would need to be an appropriate location to hold the ceremony, because sometimes people want to have a flag raising ceremony, and we've had requests for that in the past, we've had to turn down. And I think at that point, it was pointed out, and perhaps by yourself, Mr. Mayor, that the V I C was less adequate for that purpose than the bandstand. But we didn't make a final.
And with the nice new bandstand roof.
We'd love to get a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion that we identify the bandstand as the preferred location for the new flag pole, whatever it was going to be called. The donated flag pole.
Seconded.
And just in discussion, I'll specify that now that if council passes this, then we'll get Derek to actually look for the spot and we'll come back and lay it out before it's flying a flag.
So we're looking for a motion that council adopt the draft flag policy as amended?
After this motion that's on the floor?
Yes.
Yes.
So we have a motion, Counselor Carver, who, do we have a secondary? Counselor O'Neil, this is for the location of the flag pole. All in favor? Good. And now? Another motion?
I can move the adoption of the flag, draft flag policy as the policy of the town of Mahone Bay.
Okay.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Can I clarify before? Just to clarify, is the motion that council adopt the draft flag policy as amended?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay. Let's go to the next ones, to strategic plan, oh, what's up? Strategic Plan Annual Review.
Long report with a short recommendation.
Yeah.
But the challenge may be finding a day when we can get quorum at this point.
Well, does everybody have their calendar? Motion is calling for March fourth per fifth.
Yes, but obviously whoever makes the motion won't include that and will include whatever they feel that they want to be.
The motion is calling for March fourth and fifth.
Yes, yes, it's just potential dates included. You'll have to slice that off whoever makes the motion. I, yeah, I should put it on the next line, probably not include it in the highlighting. So one, one date, I believe, will be more than sufficient for this purpose. If council doesn't get through it, one meeting can always resolve that and another one.
Okay.
May I?
No, no, I was, I was just gonna say, at this point, Counselor Noss? I will not be here.
Counselor Noss, no, he won't be.
Is there, is there a reason why we need that cadence of having, do we need that meeting before it goes to the meeting on the tenth? Is that the issue?
I, no, we need this before we approve the annual budget, I would say.
We're months away from that annual budget.
So you could allow this to, to go on a little bit longer. Yeah, I will have limited availability the following two weeks after this, but, you know, you can jump it to the end of March.
Fifth, I'm not available on this.
What is the expected duration of this meeting?
I, I would think that sixty to ninety minutes is a sufficient duration for the meeting.
They typically have been relatively short.
I'm not going on vacation. I've just got one meeting in town with you and one meeting in town not with you that will take me up further.
There you go. Okay. So do we have dates? Fourth and fifth won't work. Deputy Mayor won't be back. Counselor Bane will be.
I think it's important that the deputy mayor be here.
Is he back? What's his date?
Late in March.
By the week of March.
He's back late March.
He's gone for three weeks and he left last month.
I think that if there's a feeling that this should be delayed until that, that late, what I would suggest council do is put this on the agenda at the first budget meeting and begin the budget process with this and, and, and see how long that takes.
When is our budget?
Well, that's it. We haven't scheduled it yet, but that way, instead of scheduling this meeting and then running into an issue trying to schedule them, we'll have that already known when we schedule later. Does that make sense?
Wonder how we can confirm when the deputy mayor.
Well, if he's gone for three weeks, it should be.
There must be recordings. Doesn't Carroll have his laptop?
Location times.
If he left last Monday, if he left on Monday, that's, if he left Monday, that would.
If we want to.
I know that anytime we take.
But I'm saying that would put him back somewhere around the twentieth, the sixteenth.
And then if this doesn't take a lot of time, then it's actually been, it is more use of calling council, because we can. So for tonight, then, I would say there's no recommendation on this report, and we can follow that up when we schedule the budget meetings.
Turning on the sixteenth of March.
What are we doing? Okay, we're turning on the sixteenth.
To the budget.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're just gonna refer this discussion to the beginning of the budget process, and then prior to getting to the budget, we'll approve the strategic plan that is.
So our budget discussion's gonna start sometime in the week of the sixteenth, twenty-third, somewhere in there?
Probably the following week, but, yeah.
Okay, well, let's get those scheduled soon, so.
Yeah, we will be, be scheduling them next week if we should have some data for you guys to look at. We're not just gonna pick the dates. We'll give you stuff to pick from. Okay, that's, that's good.
Okay, Monday, March twenty-third. Okay, so nothing more for that one? I don't believe. Let's go to special events permitting.
Recommendation, another scheduling of something. It's not necessary for council to pick this date right now if you make this motion, or you can pick the actual date.
Mary, I'd move the council direct staff to schedule public information meeting concerning proposed changes to the special event and festival plan.
Okay. Do we have a secondary? Counselor O'Neil? On the question? All in favor? Motion's carried. Proposed new private road name.
Under the newly adopted civic addressing.
Addressing policy.
See the assessment base going up as we speak. Duplexes, progress.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is interesting, then. I was mentioning about the use of apostrophes being something I would recommend avoiding, and I noticed that they've already avoided it.
Yeah, they've avoided.
It's plural.
Where? It's, there's apostrophes in their proposed name.
Oh, what? I can't see it.
I don't see it.
Oh, in the handwritten application.
Yeah, oh, in the handwritten application.
Oh, so does that mean that she removed the, ah, she did. Interesting. So did Cynthia note that she removed it, or was it a coincidence?
I thought she just.
Well, there was an action.
Yeah. So all the way through, she's not used the apostrophe, and I wish that it had noted that that was intentional, but I would suggest that that is intentional.
To comply with policy.
I mean, I, I don't think we prohibit the use of apostrophes in street names, but I would generally discourage them if we can.
Yeah. And we can, we can approve.
We go down to her original application.
Yeah. She may not be aware of the issue around the apostrophe.
She has it in there, but if we feel we don't want apostrophes, then I say.
Maybe my recommendation would be Christine's Place without the apostrophe.
So you want a motion to that?
Yes, please.
He can do it on the, he'll do it after we do the motion.
I'd make a motion that we rename this road Christine's Place with an apostrophe.
Do we have a secondary? Um, seconded by Counselor Bane. On the question, Counselor Feeny.
So, that, when, when we drive by that new duplex that's under construction.
Yes.
When we drive by it on the right-hand side, driving to Block House, when we, you're in your car right in front of that building, are you on West Main Street?
Main Street these days.
Main Street.
You're on Main Street.
You're on Main Street. And if you turn right onto the road and drive up to the pumping station, you're on Swickers Lane.
Swickers Lane.
So we're talking about, we're talking about the driveway that leads off of Swickers Lane.
But it goes back to Main Street.
Look at the map. And it goes back to Main Street. So this is a, a new road.
Yes.
A new road.
It's, yeah, it's like a cul-de-sac, not a cul-de-sac.
It's a driveway that would become considered to be a present road.
A driveway, and so when I, and the reason I'm asking is about, about the new intersection with the, with the Senior Citizens complex. Okay, which is two hundred, a hundred yards from this. So there must be some accreditation from somebody in the Department of Transportation to start splicing in a road onto Main Street versus a driveway. Right? Like, so.
It's within our prerogative. I mean, there's a spacing between two roads accessing Main Street that would need to be considered normally. But it's usually only probably forty foot minimum.
But is our traffic authority to the degree that you are that, like, are we, are we allowed to create a road that, that interfaces with Main Street? Like, this is the creation of a new road, not, not the renaming of a road, right? So we're creating, we're creating a new road. Fair enough, like, don't get me wrong, I'm happy to have Christine's Place. I'm just wondering about, about that particular location, given I've heard in any number of citizens have concerns about traffic congestion along that, that stretch of the road, specifically around the new entrance to the Senior Citizens complex, which is just, just another twenty yards down the road. It is, it is. I, I just don't, wouldn't want to do something here that's gonna set a precedent that's gonna cause this grief three months from now on the other item.
Because even the existing Swickers Lane is closer to the nursing home.
It is.
Than the end of this roadway. Counselor Bane?
Yeah, I, I think it's probably a good point. I did second the motion. I could take it back because putting a driveway onto a highway, there is a line of sight requirement. And I can't comment on that because I don't know what the line of sight would be. I don't know if it's fifty meters or seventy-five meters or, or what it is. In other words, you can't stick a driveway on top of a hill. People come flying up into the hill, you know, that sort of thing. There are probably some provincial rules coming on to highway such as Highway three twenty-five that may govern highway entrance. I'm not sure, but I would.
Yeah, the standings are based on the speed limit.
I would look into it, speed limit and line of sight.
Yeah, so line of sight at fifty kilometers an hour is required to be a minimum of forty feet?
Possibly this is qualifies, and if it does, that's fine.
Forty feet to the crest of the hill?
Uh, forty feet line of sight on the road from either direction.
Either direction.
Like, if somebody's waiting at the exit.
Um, I, I, when I looked at that map, I, I didn't understand why it was looping around, uh, so that there's one end on Swickers Lane and the other end on Main Street, it didn't make sense to me, it would, it would have made more sense to have the horseshoe shape with both coming out on Swickers Lane, I didn't understand the need for, to confuse the issues on Main Street, um, that way, and I appreciate, uh, Councilor Bain's question about that, what the, do we have to, has it been documented that this is an approved?
I think it makes sense to defer this and ask for documentation, and then we can come back with it. And my, my expectation is that, that our land use bylaw does have some, um, regulation in that regard that would be reflective of the basic requirements for transportation planning, but I'd rather we've had a chance to look at that. Uh, as far as the, why don't they access from Swickers Lane, Swickers Lane is a privately owned road, but we actually don't own, so we're not the ones who can answer that question.
Is it possible, when this item comes back to council, that we can position the foundations for the new structures? On the plot plan, so we can see relative to Councilor Carver's question, yes?
Yeah, as long as the property owner is willing to, to do that, um, I asked that question when I got the request from the, the plan people for the approval, and I said, well, I only see construction of one building there right now, but they're saying for residents.
Two, two, two doubles.
Yeah, so I don't know where the other ones go when I.
Councilor Brand, you seconded that motion?
Yes.
Have you withdrawn your second status?
I will withdraw.
I did.
So, one last question, Mayor, I would have thought that if some citizen was gonna create a new road, an actual road where the obligation was to pave it and plow it and salt it and make sure there's a stop sign in front of it, then that would have had to come to a development agreement, meaning, if it's simply a driveway, feel free to call your driveway whatever you want, but if it's a road, then I think that should go to the P A C.
So we just adopted the policy that governs the process for lane would become a road, not specific numbering, right?
They are saying that this is a private driveway that requires a name because it's got four structures on it.
That's how the civic addressing works, once you have three or more.
That's right, but it is still classified private driveway, I don't think the town is being required to take over this road and maintain it or anything else.
No, certainly not.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
But I think that Joe's point about, like, from an insurance perspective, are they required to do more, if it is named, probably yes, but it's their decision.
Well, let's, maybe, if you're agreeing to withdraw your motion.
Was it your motion?
No, it was mine, and I.
It was yours.
And withdraw it, then we'll allow staff to do their magic and we'll get the answers for the next time around. Councilor Carver?
But am I right in thinking that they don't have to name it, it's, we are being nice to them by entertaining the question.
If they, if they want a third civic on this road, they have to name it.
If they have a, a third civic, and are they planning a third civic?
They want four civics, because they're.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Well, then, yeah, they've got two duplexes.
Well, for naming, I just.
For separate.
For four civics, we need.
Okay.
Want to make sure.
So we'll look for that at a future date.
If it's just a driver.
Heritage Advisory Committee report and the Remo draft minutes are both in your package, does anyone have any questions?
Heritage Advisory Committee is a really good committee.
I'm pleased to see how consistently it's been able to meet quorum with some exception, it's, uh, certainly been quite consistent. Lori, do you want to do something?
Uh, sorry, I just wanted to clarify, we're just doing heritage advisory, because there was something on the Remo one.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, well, the, the first comment was on Heritage Advisory, yeah, uh, if there's no other comments on Heritage Advisory, the Remo one, um, this is back on our agenda, because, uh, we previously did not receive a request to approve the, um, annual Remo budget, the Mahone Bay contribution to the Remo budget, but it was included in the discussion at the Remo board meeting, and I clarified with Angela that her intention was that on the basis of these minutes, we would approve our contribution, which M O D L has expressed, um, that they have done, and, uh, I'm not sure about the others yet, but, but we'll see. And that is included in here somewhere, right, Marina?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we have the.
Yes.
Is there a new?
So this breakdown was specified as being exactly the same as the previous year, but she didn't actually include it here.
Didn't actually include it.
How quickly do you think you can come up with a previous year or twenty years worth of?
Um, while she's doing, while Lori's doing that, um, I just noticed that the Nova Scotia Emergency Measures Organization is not, their, their website is not being reinstated according to these minutes, and why would that be?
Can you come to where it is, Penny, so I can scroll through it?
Eight point two, I think it was.
No, it's only four point two.
Where were the? Are there two minutes here, two? Where did I get that? Sorry.
Total budget's one twenty-five, ma'am.
Total.
Thanks. Oh, sorry, I thought you were.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I don't have the right reference for that question. So, oh, here it is, point three under six one one.
In the Remo.
It was again to item eight point two.
Yeah. I know that this was discussed, I remember discussing, who else was in this room? Any remembrance of that?
No, nothing.
Well, it, it just, it seemed odd to me, and I'm glad to see that the local one's gonna get back up and running, um, because a, a lot of people are asking questions about emergency measures and what we need to do and what's available, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, if I can remember, I think perhaps the decision was with regards to the public-facing nature of the website versus, uh, website intended for internal access, so, uh, provincial MOs defining of their role in that regard doesn't include providing those direct alerts to the public in that sense, I think it may have been something to do with that, but that's speculation, because I can scarcely recall.
Councilor Bain?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for Councilor Carver, you say you've had people asking?
Yeah.
So, are, can they put it in writing and refer it, I mean, we do have the chairperson sitting right there.
We, we do have a lot of information that's.
So that we can deal with these requests, so you can answer them as a counselor, or we can, does it go beyond the information that's currently available?
Well, some of the questions have come up, for example, in the, uh, resilience committee group, uh, where is the comfort station, where do I go, what do I do, and with a sense of anxiety around that?
Do you not direct those questions and say, I'll try and come back with an answer?
Yes, we can, but those, those are not province-wide, those are our own Remo.
These were discussed at the last Remo meeting, the differences between a comfort station and this, so the answer is, and that's in here, Councilor Carver, but I would suggest that you make a, a formal request through that person, because those questions are answerable. You know, just, just, just a comment, and I mean, it applies to the Center for Emergency, it applies to a lot of these. Comfort stations, well, they can be, you know, various places, so, the comfort stations could be almost anywhere, depending on who decides that.
But as, as, uh, Ms. Hemdenhofer, who is the Remo coordinator, observed, the whole thing around comfort centers is in a state of flux, there are changes that are going on, but ultimately, for us here, the decision will be taken by a Remo and the town of Mahone Bay. The province does not.
Oh, I understood, yes, I got that, yeah.
Issue direction.
Um, and, and also, my understanding was, according to the minutes from the last Remo that were circulated, um, those policies had, were still in draft form and had not been confirmed yet, so they, so because they're still in draft form, um, they weren't communicable to the public.
Well, they're in draft form because they required the review and approval of each of the municipalities before they could be approved back to the board, but because we did discuss it in open council, I would say they are public draft.
Public drafts, but not, not yet confirmed, that's what I mean.
But, but, in terms of being secretly, they are.
No, not secret, but not yet confirmed. But as, I'd appreciate you saying that the situation are in flux, or situations are in flux.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Did you ever find the number?
Yeah, no, we're both looking at it.
Pick a number.
Close, it's, it, we can say conclusively, it's less than thirty-five hundred, last year it was thirty-three and some change, um, it would just be nice to have this.
Could we craft the motion on the basis of the, the overall budget, acknowledge the overall budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and.
Our chair remaining.
And our share, our share, our share of the total budget of one twenty-five?
I think you'd be fine to say.
I feel like nine hundred dollars, whatever it is.
That is all we're talking about, I, I think it's about thirty-four hundred dollars, actually, so it is a little bit more than that.
There was, there was some increases and some decreases, and at the end of the day, the change was negligible. So we would have a motion to approve the town of Mahone Bay's portion.
Of the Remo budget, the Remo budget.
And moved and seconded?
I hope it's not ten million.
Mahone Bay, the motion's carried.
If it is, well, there isn't a young fellow in the room.
Yep, there is.
That's Remo done, H O C is done, uh, there is no, it, new, there's none. That concludes our broadcast pattern for the day, except for the closed session, which we are both ahead.
Excellent.
Yeah, I shall leave.
You could ask if he has any questions or comments.
You've got all ten minutes to yourselves.
If you have any questions or comments.
Well, actually, I do have a.